All right, we're all here and we'd like to welcome everyone to the city of Cotwood Heights. It's Tuesday, January 7th, and as we mentioned in our work session, we get to say it's 2020. I can remember when it was 2000 and I thought that was quite a year, and so going to 2020 is a big leap. We'll begin the meeting with a welcome and a pledge, and we'll ask Scott Bracken if you'd please lead us in that pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bracken. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, which I'm going to read and then ask for a vote of the council. It's a proclamation designating January 2020 as School Board of Recognition Month, and the proclamation states, whereas public schools are integral to the stability and viability of our democracy, empowering young people to become productive contributors to an ever-changing world while upholding our nation's values of freedom, self-reliance, and equality of opportunity, and whereas the mission of the Canyon School District is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, including among its 34,000 students, 57,000 learners in the boundaries of the city of Cotwood Heights, and whereas the Canyon's Board of Education has forged and strengthened relations with the city and various other municipal, state, and federal partners in order to further define, implement a shared educational vision for the betterment of families, children, and communities, and whereas the board works to secure direct resources to promote student achievement and has invested in such innovations as standards-based grading, Utah's first differentiated diplomas, the configuration of grades in every school, expanded early childhood and early college programs, and whereas the board has endorsed two successful bond proposals to bring much-needed safety upgrades to our schools, including complete rebuilds of Butler Elementary School, Butler Middle School, and now underway reconstruction of the Brighton High School campus in the city, and whereas the board is committed to recruiting and retaining the best and brightest teachers and has invested in progressive salary schedule to elevate the teaching profession, and whereas, under the board's leadership, the Canyon School District has emerged as a district of distinction, as evidenced by rising test scores, graduation rates, and celebrated achievements of students, artists, and athletes. Whereas each January, School Board Recognition Month is celebrated throughout the nation, and whereas the city's city council desires to express its admiration of and appreciation to the Board of Canyon School District for its exemplary leadership in the area of education, for its vibrant partnership with the city, and various endeavors for the benefit of the district's patrons and students of our city. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Cotwood Heights City Council and its manager that the city hereby recognizes and commands the Canyon School Board of Education and hereby proclaim January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month in the city. Okay, with that being said, we applaud the efforts of our school district and tonight would like to recognize them. To make this formal, I would ask for a motion by the council in support of this proclamation. If I could hear one, please.
To approve the proclamation 2020-1, with cooperation and the continued communication we have between the city and the school district and the other governmental entities in Cotwood Heights really, really adds to the standard of living and the reason people like being here so much.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion? Here and I call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael?
Yes.
And Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's going to be confusing to people going forward. We say Peterson twice. We do want the record to show that he misspelled his name, but that's fine. Thank you for that. We do have some citizen comments, so we'll open that up right now and invite Lynn. You want to come on up and make some comments? Haven't seen you for a little while.
Yeah, had to take a break.
Okay, hopefully you're doing something fun.
Not necessarily, but anyway, good evening, Mayor Council. Happy New Year to you all. I just wanted to commend Councilmember Michael specifically for her comments during the December 17th work session where she questioned why citizen input was not being solicited in the rewrite of the PDD zone. The PDD zone rewrite was a perfect opportunity for the city to do something different and actually include the citizens of Cotwood Heights from the very beginning of the process. Instead, the consultant in this project is soliciting input from developers, not from the residents, even though it was the residents who questioned some of the language in the PDD zone to begin with. We have a great resource in the citizens of Cotwood Heights, and I think this resource is being wasted. In my opinion, this is exactly why so many people think developers are king in our city and why they no longer show up to voice their opinions at our planning and council meetings. Again, thank you, Councilmember Michael, for pointing this problematic, pointing out this problematic behavior, and thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, thank you. You raised a good question. I will definitely follow up on that because I assume there will be citizen input and that's...
And I know you said in that meeting that we will get to see it after it's already in, there's something to present. You specifically said that. So I just wanted to tell you, from this side of the dais for the past 15 years, it is very difficult once something is in writing before Planning Commission and before City Council to actually get that verbiage changed, and that's the problem. I feel like it needs to be earlier in the process, not later. Thanks.
Valuable comment. Thank you. Okay. Roger, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople, for showing up tonight. I was told as a salesperson that once I have the order to shut up. So I'm talking about dog parks, and so we don't have the order yet, but I just have a few things to add.
Appreciate it.
Okay. The majority of parks and recreation agencies have dog parks. Ninety percent of park directors report that dog parks are increasing in popularity. In 2010, there were 2,000 dog parks in the U.S., and in 2020, there are almost 4,000. Sixty percent of U.S. households own a dog, which is kind of shown in the survey that just came out today. Sandy City reports that the off-leash dog park in Sandy has been a huge success. New York City has 145 dog parks, but ranks 27th in the top 100 cities. An interesting thing about dog poop is that 25,000 pieces of dog poop were analyzed by DNA in 2018. So there's a chance for us to have DNA testing of dogs so that any dog poop that's left in the dog park is identified as to who the person is. And then there's a gate-access key fob curry system that if the person who has their dog who poops there, you can have the key fob removed for permission for entry into the dog park.
Well, that's news to me. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have all this information. I'll give it to...
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, and again, well, hopefully you were interested in the information presented in the survey, and that'll be shared with the public, and we'll be using that in our retreat coming up later, and I...
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make comment who has not submitted a comment card? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Gelman. I'm a resident of Cotwood Heights since 2002. I'm a mother of two teenagers and a Labrador Retriever, and I'd like to read you an email. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, I'd like to know when we will be getting a dog park in Cotwood Heights. I've lived in Cotwood Heights for 13 years, and I was told 10 years ago there were plans to develop a dog park. This hasn't happened yet. Our city has spent money on new soccer fields, brown street signs designating historical roads, but no place we can take our dogs and let them play safely and legally off-leash. Sixty percent of the taxpayers on my street own dogs, and we feel that some of our tax money should go towards development of a dog park. If you have never been to a dog park, I encourage you to visit Quinn Junction Dog Park and Park City. This type of park would be the perfect addition to our Cotwood Heights community. How can we make this happen? Sincerely, Stephanie Gelman. This was sent to Mayor Colomore, October 2nd, 2015. It's now January 7th, 2020, and we still don't have a dog park. So you can understand my frustration. I understand that there's been two potential sites identified, the overflow parking area for Ferguson Canyon and Mountain View Park. I think that's great. My recommendation would be dog parks in both. I'd start with the overflow parking and have developed that into a natural landscapes dog park, and then the Mountain View area could be used for more developed-type dog park with an agility equipment, and then a smaller area for owners of smaller dogs. But I think that our community has a large enough population to support two dog parks, and if just one is developed or made into a dog park, then there's greater risk for having that overused. So I'm looking forward to a dog park this year.
I think we should have you help cut the ribbon when that happens.
I'll bring my dog, and she'll run around.
Well, Stephanie's one of the initial advocates in the city of wanting a dog park for many years, so we appreciate it. Hopefully, we're making some progress.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak who has not submitted a card? Come on up. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Scott Wright. Been a resident here for 29 years, I think. I've been concerned about the idling of cars in the city. I know we have an ordinance, and I was wondering if there was a way to maybe remind our citizens more of that ordinance. I don't see anything, especially during the winter, about idling maybe in the newsletters or just remind people that that's a part of the city. And also, I was wondering, if you go to places like Taco Bell or Burger King or whatever, and the people are sitting in line in their cars, they just sit there and idle and idle and idle. I was wondering if there could be a sign outside those businesses that would say there's a city ordinance to have no idling while you're waiting? Could you please turn off your car? I don't know, something just to remind people of the city that that ordinance is placed, because I think it's really important to keep our air clean as we can during the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just reminders.
Thank you. But I think we've heard some, Talley's brought that up recently and Christine as well, but Tim, you have a comment?
Yeah, we can definitely put that on our social media and website as reminders. We have had our officers go out and particularly around the schools where there's idling, they've been politely talking to people about that concern, and so we have been doing that, but we can definitely put it on social media and reminders and look at newsletters as well.
And something we can add on the retreat, and it becomes a fiscal issue, is I think appropriate signage in certain areas where there's high traffic is something we can still consider, but it goes in with a group of other recommendations, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Anyone else?
Can you just remind me of something? It's totally separate. Five seconds.
I was driving on Highland Drive, and somebody was trying to make a left turn out of the Starbucks that's at Highland...
Oh, a left turn out of...
Correct. So just wanted to mention that. Is there any way we might want to think about that being not a left turn out of that Starbucks onto Highland Drive?
Yeah, Highland Drive's got a still a couple of issues in my mind, yeah.
Right. I just noticed that the other day, and I just forgot to mention it, so.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
That could be considered.
All right. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone.
Mayor, I have a comment, a public comment that was submitted to the council. I just want to read it into the record, if that's okay. I'm glad I caught that. Anyway, this was sent to the mayor and council. It's from Eric Cron, and he talks about, I'm not going to read through this because you have this copy, but it's related to dog parks and his support of that, particularly allocating the land east of Wasatch Boulevard and north of Honeywood Drive is the best location. You can read through the details, but I want to make sure for the record that it was put in there that he submitted that comment, and you have that information now.
Yeah, thank you. I will have several comments on that location, but we'll talk about it later or after the meeting, yeah. Any other comments? Hearing none. Moving forward with standing quarterly reports, and Lieutenant Bartlet, you're up. Thank you.
Good evening. I have the quarterly report for you guys. So currently with our switch over to the new system, to the new versus term system from Spillman, we're trying to work through the way to mine the data to kind of show us what we're working with, and it's new for us. So we're trying to pull all the information out. Things are stated differently, and we're learning how to do that and getting some other software to pull out the information that we want. So what we've had for the last 11 years, the Spillman report, we kind of tweaked and worked and learned that system for us, and now we have to do the same thing with versus terms. So some of these numbers will be a little lower than what we're used to, but we're still trying to get all that information that we've had before. So our call volume hasn't changed, the service that we're doing hasn't changed, but when we go pull the numbers out of the new system, it looks different to us. So we kind of have to figure out how we add that all up, and we're still learning as we go along. So what I have for you now is the 1,315 calls for service and 218 on-vue cases for this last month, and then, of course, you can see the last quarter. We have the information free for the last quarter. And again, the decline of the calls for service has to do with some of the data that we mine, but we're figuring that out, and I think we'll have that all figured out soon. Our response times are also different, the way that it's done through versus term versus the way that it's done through Spillman, and we're trying to figure that out, as well as some of the policies that VEC has for how they dispatch out calls. Every agency kind of does it a little bit different. We're trying to figure that out and work it to the way that works best for Cotwood Heights. Of course, you can see our three-minute response time for priority one calls, which is excellent, and we're proud of that. We're happy that we're getting the three-minute response time for our priority one calls. Our priority two calls are seven minutes, and then the 14 minutes for priority three and above is something that we're working with VEC on. With the other agencies that they dispatch out for versus term, they kind of have it to where they do notifications and don't put it out, or they'll put it up on the screen but won't put it out, and so we're just working on through policies on that and trying to get that. We like our response times to be down and...
When was the changeover?
It was six weeks ago.
Six weeks?
Yeah, six weeks ago. So as you can see, it's a little different, and so we're just trying to figure that out and work through some policies with VEC on how we do that. We're getting there. We're getting there quickly. It's just how that information is pulled back out, we're trying to figure out. So it's a learning experience, a learning curve for us, but we're doing good business still.
Let me speak to that just a little bit. As you can see, on the priority one calls, which really have to do with, you know, imminent threat to life or property, where there should be and still, you know, the best in the valley. On the less priority calls, no informational calls and so forth, that might even be a non-injury accident that you see in the higher priority threes and fours. Those other agencies, specifically UPD agencies, have a policy that they will hold calls for four to six minutes before they'll let anybody even know that they exist. It's just how they do business. That's not how we do business. So we've already had this discussion with them. Those should be coming down. Their policy is that they can hold it. It's non-life-threatening. People can wait, and the sergeants will be advised, and they'll tell them next car available. Our model's different. The minute a call comes on the screen, we expect people to pay attention to it, because if you're the one waiting, as you know, for the police to arrive, that's a big deal, and it's a big deal to me. So having had that discussion with the UPD and VEC dispatchers, they understand now that they'll notify the sergeants immediately. The sergeants can take calls. Detectives can take calls. We'll do whatever we have to do to make that number come down, because that's how we do business, but it was a philosophical difference.
It'll be interesting to see this as we progress. I know that we've met with Mike Schellner, our representative of VEC, and now it'll be, Tim will continue to work and get this fully acclimated, yeah.
Point of clarification, we're using the same dispatches UPD.
Yes, we're using the same dispatches UPD, yeah. They have different policies than we do on how they put the information out, and we're just working through the policies of how they put information out.
And we can force their hand to put information out.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I had a handful of emails back and forth to them tonight on some other things that, you know, we're just, it's just a different policy from agency to agency, and the amount of calls that they have and the amount of calls that we have and the service that we want to provide, it's just getting all of their policies on board. And right now, with the staffing that they have at VEC, you know, they're moving people from call taker to one agency to another agency, and every agency is different, obviously. And so those dispatchers are trying to figure out what these agencies want, and so I have a policy manual that VEC puts out, and so each agency is different, and then we put the things in we want on that policy for Cotwood Heights. And so as those dispatchers learn our channel and what we want done, they will push it out. And we've been working through this with them for six weeks now, and we're getting it down. We're getting it... I mean, the first couple of weeks when we got, we were getting this information, and when we moved over versus term, the numbers were very high, and we were like, wait a minute, why are they so high? Well, let's figure out why they're high. And so we've been adjusting and working with VEC and getting through it.
So that logistically, UPD, the Sheriff's Office Dispatch, is no longer physically located in on their premises. They have physically moved to the VEC building, so they are all together. Even with that, you have the Spillman and versus term agencies at VEC, and the problem that the new director's going to have is finding a way to properly blend them together so they understand that they are one big entity. The other problem is that switching over, as one agency, Murray, is coming over, South Jordan is coming over, in the interim, when you hire employees, they're two very different systems. How do you train them on versus term or on VEC or on Spillman? And so, you know, as people quit and you hire new employees, it's hard to get, you might have some first-term employees, and you might have five of those, and you need 10, and then you hire new ones, and it takes a while to get them spun up. And in the meantime, you still have to understand that you're dispatching for Spillman agencies, so it's going to be awkward for a few months till everyone gets moved over to versus term, but at the end of the day, it'll be worth it.
Yeah, they've been cross-training dispatchers for a while now from one system to another, and we're working through the bumps of that.
And if I may add on this, the, at the VEC meetings, VEC board meetings, there's been discussion about that, and the challenges with this merging with the versus term and Spillman, so.
While we're ironing out this new transition, could we get a police report every council meeting just for the next three times we meet or something, just to stay on top of this, instead of circulating, because right now we get our reports every other, every other time quarterly?
I push them out every month. I push out the report every month. I'm here with you every quarter, but I do push out the report.
We've been getting a hard copy.
We have a staff report.
Yeah, we get them out, I get them out in council communications every month.
Just a really abbreviated presentation for the public, because I think our residents pay a hefty premium and they expect a premium service. They want a four-minute response on a fender bender. I think that's a level of expectation that the public has. So just for the interim, could we report to the public more regularly?
Yeah, I think we need to work through the details of getting the policies in place so we know what that level of service is going to be, and we're working towards that, and we can provide information.
I think I have it ironed out. I think I have the policy part of it ironed out, and so we're starting to see the decline of the call number, and it really was priority three and above that they held. So our priority one, our priority two haven't really changed all that much. It's the priority three and above that they're holding, and so we've kind of worked out that, the policy issue of it, and now we're working through it. So I got the policy set. We got it all written up. We got it typed. Now the dispatchers know it, and they're kicking it out.
The dispatchers were actually holding a call before they let us know what was happening?
They were just holding the call. They would sit in the queue, and they'd hold it, because it's not, there's no threat to life or property. There's, you know, it's not an injury accident or an accident that they're waiting for a response, and so they can, they can hold that call. Someone will call you, they just hold it for a while, you know, and before they put it onto our screen. Now we said, we said here at Cotwood Heights, we expect it to be on our screen, and our officers or our sergeants to be notified immediately, and now they're doing that. And so we're seeing the decline in the numbers, because when it first came out, it was very high, and we're starting to see it come down.
So I think what Talley's asking for is, is it possible to just get this clipped and stick it in our weekly council communication, because what you're saying is that as the weeks go by, these numbers are going to look better incrementally?
Yeah, except for priority one. Priority one's not going to look any better.
Well, yeah, three minutes is amazing, so. I think that's, I think that, is that what you're suggesting?
Sure.
Just a quick snippet, one weekly?
Really quickly for the public.
We can, we can cut it out, and I'll get it to Tim for the weekly thing, so. We can get that. And just a breakdown of those response times, just to kind of show you how long when these calls come in and how long they sit for, how long it takes us to get to the call, just so everybody can see. I mean, on our priority one call, that call comes into dispatch, you call 911. They answer the phone. They go through the standard questions that they need, you know, when, where, how, who is it, those sort of things, and then they build the call. They push it right out to the computer system, which hits our computers immediately, and the dispatcher puts it out. And we are looking at, you know, a minute 27 of travel time through the city on an emergency call, which is lights and sirens, to get to that for a total time of three minutes, which is outstanding.
I'm not sure if I've ever seen it that low in all my years.
It hovers between three and four. This last...
It's usually high three, yeah.
Yeah, this last month, we got it down pretty good.
I'm sure that'll all adjust.
As we work through the system, when we get this worked out, I think we're doing pretty good with it, and we've got these policies ironed out.
Can you just run through, just as a reminder, priority, just what constitutes one, two, and three?
So like a threat to life or a serious property thing, you know, injury accident, you know, robbery's and those different kind of calls. In-progress, calls where there's a threat, that's a priority one, which is, you know, priority one response from us as a code, lights and siren to get there as quick as we possibly can. A priority two would be an accident, like a blocking accident. They're in traffic and it's blocking, and they, you know, they need an immediate response. That's to be a priority two. A priority three would be an accident that they're pulled into the parking lot, you know, and they're just waiting for an officer to come. And then, you know, we have death reports that they don't require in-person contact, different things like that, all the way up to a priority seven.
So like if Target calls you and says there's a shoplifting, what is that?
If Target called and said there was a shoplifter in the store that they were watching, cut open packages, it would probably come through as a priority two. If Target called and said that there was a stabbing in the parking lot, it would come through as a priority one.
And if they called and they had the suspect in custody and were just waiting for an officer, it would be a three?
Yeah, it would be a three. Good. Our overall crime view for the month of December, 88 calls for that for the month of December, and as you can see, I give you last December's kind of thing for you to look at and...
There's one number that just shocks me.
The assault number?
Last year, 24 assaults?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are those, are they unique assaults? I mean, could it be the same person, or is it, oh, it's just a unique individual?
So the domestic assault would fall under that. December's a high domestic assault month.
But they're all individual events, not the same person?
Yeah, no, all individual events, yes.
Nine surprises me a little more than the ten.
Yeah, we...
Well, just in comparison, yeah.
We had a good month, the month of December.
Yeah, I just said the nine is nicely low.
Yeah, as you know, holidays bring out...
The best.
Yes.
Okay. The others were consistent, is why.
Our arrests for the month of December, and as you can see, I put the last three months on here for the arrest, and of course, the juvenile arrests at the bottom. So 78 adult arrests, seven juvenile arrests, which is about standard for us. Traffic citations, my favorite. So as I ran...
Wait a second, what do you mean by my favorite?
This is my favorite subject. It's my favorite subject. So as I ran the traffic citations for, I did the traffic citations for the quarter, because at every quarter, we do employee evaluations on our guys on the, it coincides with the shift bid when they move shifts every quarter. So I pulled the traffic citations for this quarter. I looked at the traffic citations, and they are lower than I would like them to be. And so I have given some direction that we need to make sure that we are out there in the public educating people either through contacts and face-to-face contacts of letting people know that this is not, that they need to slow down or they need to... or they need to, you know, different things like that, um, or, uh, warnings, written warnings or citations.
I'm a fan of warnings personally.
I know you are. And, 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 uh, citations when, when deemed necessary. And so I would like to see our warning and citation number be a little higher. Um, as you know, uh, warnings and citations, uh, bring about a change in behavior. And we need that change in behavior to make sure that our streets stay, stay safe.
Have you, have you ever heard of any, uh, research that says that the actual citation has any greater impact than a warning?
Absolutely.
Yes, there, 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 that exists.
Yeah, I've had, I've just had people tell me that they get a warning or just as-
Some people, and some people are.
No, I appreciate that. I, I, I appreciate knowing that.
It's just, you don't know who the difference is, who's, you know, you, you do it for the lowest common denominator and you don't know who, who the warning is going to suffice and so.
Especially if you, you, you've been warned three or four times and it's number five, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we have that, we have that information. When we give issue at warnings, we have that information. And, and, and I, I, I want us to educate the public, the motoring public as to what the laws are and that they need to follow them. And, and I'm really big on, on making sure that, that, that it's done. And I mean, we get traffic complaints all the time. We get accidents all the time. You know, we have, um, traffic jams and different things going on in the city. And I want to make sure that, that people are being educated one way or another. I'm not telling my guys to go out and write 10 citations a day.
Both have a place, absolutely.
Yeah, I just, that, that it, the enforcement needs to be done. And that's part of our job is, is enforcement. And so, um, I would like to see our ticket numbers come up a little mu, a little bit.
Can you explain that? You, you, this is the second time you said it. You'd let, you said you want to see citations and you want to see, um, uh, warnings go up. Can you, wha, what, was there a, a particular pattern of incidents over the last month that's making you make that statement? Or what, what's sort of, what, what's, what are the pieces that make up your rationale?
With the amount of officers we have and the amount of contacts we have with people on a daily basis? Like, I, I, I think we can do more education on, on traffic in the city. I, I would like to have zero traffic accidents, zero hit and runs, zero pedestrian accidents in the city. And, and that's our goal. Our goal is to make sure that everybody drives safe. And, uh, and I think that if we're out there making contacts with these people, um, that, that sometimes we need to issue citations. And I'd like to see our, our citations for the month hover around 200.
I mean, historically, they have, it has been there.
Yes, historically, it has been there. I like to see around 200 citations for the month. I, I, I think that would show that our guys that are out there, uh, working the road are making the appropriate contacts and, and educating people.
And I, and I think that's the point. It's not a quota.
No.
Yeah, that scares me when you start saying, shooting for numbers. But it's the point of educating our constituents. And just the survey, we just saw that one of the biggest concerns of our, our community is traffic.
Yes.
And so if we can use that intera, interaction with our officers to help deal with traffic things, i.e., uh, Benga Boulevard and, uh, Wasatch Boulevard or vice versa. Four Union, actually, Four Union's one of those.
Yeah, I mean, we have some, we have some, some pretty busy roads in the city and, and we make a lot of contacts and we, we do, we deal with a lot of accidents. And I'd like to see the people, uh, you know, I'd like to see it be safer. And, you know, we currently don't qualify for, for federal funds for dangerous roads because we don't have dangerous roads. I like it to be even safer. And so I, I would like to see our tickets, uh, this is just my personal preference. I like to see them hover around 200 and our warnings hover around 100. That's what I'd like to see.
Dan, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The main arteries versus neighborhoods. I have people all the time that complain, say, these guys are blasting through here.
Yep.
Park Ridge going down 17th. What percentage are we? 80% the main arteries and then, I mean, what's the percentage?
Yeah, a lot of, so a lot of our, a lot of our traffic citations come off of the main arteries. That's where the traffic accidents are. We're issuing citations on traffic accidents. That's where the traffic accidents are. So we, we have a lot of contacts on the main arteries. When people call in and they say, hey, Park Ridge is like, you know, the Autobahn right now, we will send officers down there and we'll do some education. And I can't, I don't tell the guys, get, get out, I want that, every person cited. I don't do that. Get out and educate them, whether it's you, you talk, you speak to them, whether you write a warning or whether you issue a citation, uh, solely depends on the officer and what they feel is necessary at the time.
But two, particularly if we have several complaints on a particular arterial or something, we will-
Absolutely. Right now I'm dealing with Wasatch and all the traffic issues that we're having on Wasatch, yeah. You know, and I got, I got, uh, speed signs up and I, you know, we're, we're, we're constantly evaluating the traffic up there and what's going on in the canyon and stuff like that. And I get a lot of complaints about Wasatch. And so I'm trying to, to figure out the best way for us to go, um, handle enforcement up on Wasatch. Um, and depending on the time of the day or what's going on in the canyon, um, sometimes it's really busy up there. And so is it, is, is it good for us to go up and start pulling people over and making traffic worse? Or is it better for us to be there and have a presence there and just let people know that they need to keep flowing and, you know, keep moving and stuff like that? So I'm just, I'm constantly evaluating how we handle the traffic up there, uh, the traffic anywhere and how, and how we do it. So that's just my, I mean, everyone, everyone here has a different opinion on what they would like down with traffic. And everybody that, that calls in and complains or wants answers has a different opinion on how, you know, and we're constantly, it's something we constantly are, are moving on and trying to do.
You do, um, have well over a decade of experience in the area. And that, um, I recall a couple of weeks ago, I read a article about, uh, Highway Patrol saying that the culture in Utah has kind of become, I can hit 10 over and I'm not going to be touched.
Yep.
And so as a result, culturally, we all just kind of migrate up there. And they said they would like to change that. To change that culture takes a lot of stops and communications and educations. That would be statewide.
Yes, sir.
I guess, if I'm wrong, but I'm kind of hearing what you say, where you hit that 300 to 400 contacts per month where there are citations or-
No, I want a thousand contacts a month, you know? I, I'd love to have a thousand contacts a month.
Where you get, where you get, where you get there, that's where our guys are out there doing enough to kind of keep the culture of what we as a city have said we would like in line.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I want people to slow down on the roads. I want them to not follow too closely. I want them to stop at the red lights and, and stop signs and stuff like that, not speed through the neighborhood. So there's a, you know, we, we have goals, we're working on it and constantly, you know-
Cultural expectation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One quick question. Can anybody drive 25 mile an hour up 30th East going up that hill?
Can anybody?
Can, has anybody ever driven 25 going up the hill?
No, I don't believe so.
I always get a little nervous when I'm going up there, just.
And drive, and Doug's license plate is.
It only turns 25 miles an hour for four houses up there.
Is that what it is?
There are four houses.
Is that right?
Other than that, it's not.
That's residential at that point, yeah.
Yeah, and we, you know, we get complaints there, but I mean, it's a little more difficult and-
And it has been, it has been, all goes all the way back to when the county did it, yeah.
Right. And so, you know, on that Wasatch and Fort Union area, we can send cars up there. There's a balance up because remember, we take a lot of criticism when we send cars up to that area from business owners who think we are trying to put them out of business or stifle their businesses. And we get a lot of accusations that we're there for other reasons and trying to enforce speed laws. We have, uh, businesses there who ask us not to come in their lots, not to be in their lots, not to. And when they're in their lots, they're trying to run radar and lidar and, and, uh, and bring those speeds down because we understand the concerns about that intersection. So they have to strike a balance, um, with the enforcement. And along with that, you know, um, you go in there and you, at rush hour, if you pull one car over for, uh, you know, a, a red light that is marginal, you've suddenly cut all that traffic down to one lane and you can actually make the problem worse and, and frustrate drivers even more. So, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that.
The power of a, of one of our marked cars sitting on the, running on, sitting on the side of the road with someone, it actually slows traffic down.
That's why, that's why they're marked.
And, and we know that, right? And so it, it's a delicate balance of, of, do we put a car up there and make our presence known? Do we, do we issue warnings? Do we issue citations? It's a, it's a constant, um, you know, uh, balancing game for us. And, and anytime that we step up enforcement, uh, the complaints step up. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's just, it's just something we are constantly moving on.
Yeah, good. All right, thank you.
Accidents for the month, as you can see, 42 is pretty good. Um, we usually, uh, aside from the, the horrible weather, we usually hover somewhere in, you know, in the, between 40 and 50 for traffic accidents. And then, um, injury accidents were at six. Just a three, yes, sir.
Do they ever, is there a time of day that those are more like, is it rush hours when that happens?
Always, always. More traffic on the road.
So the answer is yes. There is some specific times of days.
Have you seen more accidents along, um, Highland after the, the new traffic or the new lane?
No, it's actually, it's, it's actually not been that bad. I know, I heard the comment about turning left out of Starbucks. I know it's an issue. Um, but it actually has not been that bad for us. I mean, we ran last year, uh, the Highland and, and the injury accidents for Highland and, and Fort Union. We were like five, you know, injury accidents for the year. We have a lot of accidents there, but injury accidents, you know, where high speeds and, and, you know, poor judgment, uh, is a factor, you know, just, and we, we constantly watch that. If we have an intersection that we believe is really bad in the city, we'll get, you know, we'll talk about it and, and bring it up with you guys and try to, to figure out a way to make-
So does our police department have a perspective as to the effectiveness of the changes we made? I'm still getting some calls of concern of merging, uh, on Highland going, uh, north.
I got to tell you, it is remarkably better.
It is better. I, it, my personal feelings aside, it is better.
Okay, that's why I'm here, okay, thank you.
So the right turn dedicated, you like that?
Oh, no. Not that I like it, I'm just saying for us as far as, as far as the accidents go and the flow of traffic, it is better.
And it may be worthwhile to have Matt come with another short update of what-
Yeah, because I'm still getting calls.
Now that we've been in a couple of months and have him just, um, I mean, having an 85% drop in people waiting more than one cycle there was significant.
That data, yeah.
People are, people are figuring out, people are learning. It's been there for a while now. People are starting to learn. I mean, people drive that route regularly.
People do crazy things.
Yes, absolutely, always.
See that.
Always.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, move ahead.
Three months, uh, in review for, for, um, our-
So we could sum this up in one slide?
Yes, sir. Well, some of it. Just our, this is our three-month interview for the, uh, the UCR crime report DUIs and accidents. Animal control and code enforcement. Um, as you know, we're down to, uh, one, one animal control code enforcement officer right now. We're going to start interviews on that next week. Um, so he's doing the best he can out there by himself, um, knowing that this time of year with, uh, parking issues for plows and different things like that and all the cougar issues we've had. Um, he's, he's a busy man and he's getting it done and we're helping him where we can. So, uh, he's out there working on it and we'll hope to have it on the one in place soon. For the month of December, we had three attended deaths, no unattended deaths. I wanted to give you guys a year review with our new, uh, '05 law. As you can see, uh, we did in, in 2018, we did 129 DUIs. And in 2019, we did 144. Uh, it is a slight increase. The only DUIs that we did under '05 were not a drop DUIs. So, uh, those are something we always have done, not a drop DUIs, where people who are restricted or people under the age of 21.
Underage or-
Uh, yeah, yeah. So we, we did not process any DUIs, um, that didn't qualify for not a drop under the '08.
12 a month, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I just want to give a quick reminder that we have a new citizen academy starting up soon. Uh, we have, uh, put the information out on social media. We're asking for people who want to attend, please get ahold of us. Uh, all the information's on our website, it's on our Facebook, it's on our Instagram. Um, we, we like people to attend, we like to, to interact with people and educate people as to what we do here at Conwood Heights. So if you have anybody, please, uh, send them our way. Safety message for the month is suicide prevention. There's not one of us in this room that hasn't been touched by suicide in one way or another. Um, and so I just wanted to take the time this month to put the information up there. And of course, uh, my presentation will be online and all the information is there, uh, all the phone numbers to call. And, and please, if, uh, if, if, uh, anyone is feeling like they need help, uh, to reach out. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
If you could send us this PDF, the one that I pulled up from your last one, or I clicked the wrong button, it was November, so.
Okay, thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Uh, Matt, Public Works report. Wow.
Is this the one that has the special animations?
This was my camping trip. I just came back.
And it shows up on everybody's computer.
Oh, my goodness.
Seriously. Work with me. How does this work? I just push these buttons? Okay. So the Public Works Quarterly, uh, City Council Report. What do I aim it at something?
What?
I just hold it? This is really messing my presentation up.
You, you got off on a good start.
I know, it did start well.
It was strong.
Oh, come on, it was such a good, I, I worked on that forever. All right, you've got a driver over here.
He said he'll drive, so next storm.
Uh, so just really quickly, we'll go through some of these, um-
Oh, God.
Sorry. It's Public Works Report, we have to do something. Okay, standard maintenance was going on, uh, res, storm drain maintenance and some, and obviously some snow plowing has been going on this last quarter. Go ahead. Some of the, uh, numbers, just FYI, just showing you a little bit of data. Uh, this is, goes back, uh, to when we originally started, uh, the Public Works Snow Plowing. So this year, just to give you a heads up, we've only had, we've had about 39 inches of snow total. We've, uh, tossed out about 1,500 tons of salt and driven about 10,000 miles on snow plowing. And you can kind of compare the other times there. Uh, as far as engineering is concerned, uh, some things that are happening to bring you up to date, the roundabout FYI, I meet tomorrow with UDOT and what we call a plan in hand. What that is, it's a red line meeting where we sit around with every UDOT employee. It seems like about 20 of us sit around the table and talk about the plans, make comments and then develop the plans a little bit further. The plan is what the, 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 the process at this point is, once we're completed with that, we'll bring it back, the, uh, for another review with the city. And, uh, we'll push forward with that and however the council would like to address it at that point. So the roundabout is going forward. Go ahead. Um, the Stormwater Master Plan we've been working on, the update will be completed by the end of this month. Out of that, we'll have projects and cost estimates as well as a proposed fee schedule that, uh, to pay for some of these projects. Um, you'll have some of that information at your retreat, so you'll be able to have that discussion as it goes on. I was, I personally was a little bit pleased to see the results of the survey that showed that people are willing to pay for infrastructure and, and as we move along. But it's something that obviously you as a council will, will address that. Um, next slide. The, uh, projects that we have going out for bid here in the next month. Um, the Porcupine Trail, that's the one aptly named that's across the street from the Porcupine Bar and Grill. That connects, uh, the park and ride to the other park and ride really is where it would go, or to Wasatch. We got it, we'll bid that out at the end of this month. That has to be completed for funding by the end of May. So we're on schedule for that. So we're on schedule for that. The design is completed and we're moving forward. One thing there that we still have to work with is Murray City. They own the property where we need a little bit from them. So we'll be contacting them. They've given us a verbal already, but we'll have to work through legal and get all that taken care of. Hopefully we got an inside track with someone over there. If they didn't burn any bridges.
I wouldn't guarantee it.
Uh, the next one is the East Jordan Canal. Oh, you pushed the button. Really, you're ruining me here, bud. You're ruining me. The next project is the East Jordan Canal. Um, that one is ready also to go out for bid. Um, we will be holding, and we've been asked by the council to hold a public meeting with the residents along that trail. And if you'll recall, this is on the north side of Mount View Park.
I assume you do that before we bid it, yeah?
Yes, yeah, we'll go from, yeah, I'm not going to try to put this project out without your approval and final. But it goes from Fort Union to the tennis courts along the backside, roughly, general area. It is paving over the, uh, piped portion of the East Jordan Canal. So that one has been funded. It's there. We need to hold the public meeting, then we'll bid it out. And that also has to be completed by the end of May.
And we have, we have approval conceptually from the canal company?
We have approval conceptually. It's Salt Lake City Public Utilities manages that. And yes, we've met with them and I think Shane, as we've worked out the agreement on that and everything's taken care of and signed. So we're moving forward on that. We also have, uh, just to bring you up to date, Scottish Drive, this area of Scottish Drive subdivision, the design is complete. That also will be bid out. Um, that involves stormwater, we're, uh, some stormwater piping, waterways, curb and gutter and road surfacing. That is a big project and that's not a timeline, but we hope to get that going this spring, finish it up by the end of summer. It will take a little while. And then we also will bid out in March, the pavement maintenance projects. If you recall, you've approved the five-year plan. We're just in the middle of the second year of the approved five-year plan. So we'll be bidding out those surface projects. We've already done some last summer. Now we'll be doing the rest of them this summer. So it's the nineteen-twenty, uh, budget year projects.
Do you send out that map maybe to Tim so we can get it in our council communications, what's going to happen?
Okay, as soon as I get it finalized, yeah, I will make sure you have it.
Yeah.
Okay, next. And also to be completed by the end of February is the Mount View Park Pavilion. We're at about eighty percent completion. So if you want to go through this, I've just brought in a few slides.
If you drive by, you'll see it's up on the, uh, south end of the, uh, splash pad. Yeah, oh, there it is.
Yeah, there's, this is it getting started. Go ahead. These are just some pictures for you to see. Just the structure, go ahead. So it is moving along. You can, as you can see, go ahead. And this covers the entire pad that is on the, uh, south side of the splash pad.
And I understand that the purpose behind this was more to provide shade. So it's not a pavilion, it'll be reserved for parties and stuff, is that right?
That is correct. Um, we have spoken with the, uh, rec center and they agree. They don't want to have, because if you start preserving this, the reason it's built, like you said, Mayor, is for for families to sit and when people are in the splash area, they can get out of the sun and, and just have a small area in which they can sit.
Big signs with bold lettering on them.
Next, I think. And one last picture. There you go. So the roof for the, it's dried in, the roof will be going on. They'll be doing flat work in the next week, which means they'll be pouring the concrete floors, get that taken care of. And we'll get that cleaned up and turned over to, uh, the residents by the end of February.
What was the grant for this? How much was it?
This total was a two hundred thousand dollar, but this included the restroom as well as a shade structure. And we backed off the restroom from expanding it. We originally were going to do that so that we can keep it open year round. We were able to do that, keep it open year round. So the restroom's been open year round this winter. So, and use the remaining funds for this, uh, shade structure. So.
Matt, what goes under there? Is it, is it benches or?
We have a couple of, we have, we, we moved four benches, I mean picnic tables. And we'll probably put them back, but bolt them down so that people can't shuffle them around and build. They are where they are and it'll be what it is. So right now there is power conduits run to that. We have, we're not running any power to it at this point. We're kind of holding off on that. Once again, we're not sure. We're going to work with the rec center and kind of go, follow their lead at that point. I think that's it. Any questions? Other than how to do a PowerPoint, which you got to be impressed.
I, I guess I have one comment. I, I have not gotten any snow plowing complaints, emails, calls or anything this year. So I think that's, we're starting off on a good foot. I can't speak to anybody else, but.
Well, I appreciate that. It has been, yes, it has been relatively quiet. I mean, I'm, I'm, the snowstorms that we've had have been on holidays, a couple of them have been on holidays, so that helps out quite a bit. And they haven't hit on Wednesdays, which really causes problems because that's garbage day in town. And, but it's, but it's been a light snow year, but I'm not taking it away. We, it has been really good. We've had some heavy snowstorms and the staff has done an incredible job of keeping the roads open.
I was up there at, at last storm and it's amazing the difference of snow levels on the high east bench versus down below.
It's been interesting. This year, the west side has gotten quite a bit of snow where the benches have been fairly, I won't say light, but lighter than usual.
Matt, I had one complaint. They said, how do they determine to send them through the neighborhoods? He said, there's no snow, there was no snow, but they came by two or three times. And so you can't win, I know, all the time.
Yeah, we get that complaint.
What's the, what's the procedure on that? Do you, if they go out, do they just lift up their plows?
Yeah, there, if there's no snow on the ground, they're lifting their blades. If, they'll drop salt if there's ice on the ground. They call, we call that, pretty much call that slushing. What they'll do is they'll go and they'll drop salt. Because once it ices up, once it gets a coat of ice, that's not a cutting blade on the front of the truck. It just floats right on top of the ice like anything else would. So we have to break that up. And so they'll drop salt in different areas. And they'll come back and make another trip after they've gone through their whole area and slush up what is melted, push that off and they'll do it again. And sometimes they, quite honestly, they'll go out and they'll drive their areas. And instead of going out in a pickup and driving it around and then seeing something, driving back, getting in their truck, coming back and salting. They'll, they'll, they'll have their trucks with them.
I tried to explain that to them. We had one that was a real wet, rainy type thing and it was glass.
Yeah, it goes, it goes ice instantly and the trucks, like I said, they, they, they won't plow ice. You can't plow ice. It floats right on top of the salt. And they'll just salt it, melt it, slush it and push it off and then rinse and repeat really is what it is.
And often as you see a skip of snow, you'll literally see the fanning of the salt that melts the snow as you drive on some domain.
Yeah, we've, we've had some calls, why are you out? And it's just a dusting of snow, but if you get the salt down, the cars will track it everywhere and then they're not plowing. They're not, they're not plowing. It, it, it eats up bits pretty good if you're trying to plow on that asphalt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, appreciate that, Matt. Uh, we have, uh, uh, just three action items, want to be in the consent calendar. The first one is consideration of ordinance three thirty-six A or three thirty-six D and, uh, Mike, you want to introduce that?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this was presented in the work session. This was also presented at the previous council meeting, so I'll be brief. This is a request to amend the zoning of a property at eighty-one twenty South Royal Lane from its current zoning designation of RR one forty-three. That's rural residential, single family. Uh, the current minimum lot size is one acre. The request is to amend the zoning to RR one twenty-one, which only changes that minimum lot size to a half an acre. All else remains the same. The current, uh, land use designation in the general plan is rural residential density. That does correspond to the, the requested, uh, zone change. So no amendment of the general plan or the land use map is necessary. This is just a zone map amendment request. Uh, the current property is one point one nine acres. If granted, the rezone would allow for a maximum potential of two lots. That would be required to go through the administrative subdivision process to meet all standards, uh, uh, through that process. Um, if you look at the context of the area, many, uh, it's a majority of the lots around this are either already zoned, RR one twenty-one, that half acre zoning. Or are located in the one acre zone but are non-conforming and, and would actually be more appropriately zoned, half acre or even something, uh, a little less. Um, there is one adjacent property to the west that is a residential property zoned, uh, one acre that complies. And then the property to the north is also greater than an acre. That is a utility property owned by Salt Lake City. Um, so given this context, given the compliance with the land use designation and the, you know, the limited maximum potential of, of redevelopment on this property. Staff has recommended approval, uh, of the zone map amendment. This was heard and considered by the planning commission prior to coming to council. Uh, the commission forwarded a recommendation of, of approval by a vote of five to one. Public comment was, was, uh, on the agenda of the last council meeting. Uh, no comments were received and none have been received in writing since. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? I think this was, uh, reviewed, uh, middle of December, took public comment, uh, that same evening and reviewed again in our, work session. Any further discussion? Here not to entertain a motion of, uh, either approval or denial of the thirty-three, thirty-three thirty-six A approval or thirty-six D denial.
We approve ordinance three thirty-six A.
It's been moved, uh, for approval of ordinance three thirty-six A. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken, seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further discussion? Here not at call for the vote. Councilmember Douglas Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. As a city, we're involved with dozens of committees and, um, uh, council assignments that have been posted. Um, I won't review all those. They're a matter of public record. Um, but each, the mayor has several and each council member has also responsibilities attending various advisory committees and councils. What you have before you is a consideration, uh, to approve those appointments, uh, for, uh, the coming year. Um, any discussion of that resolution twenty twenty dash one? Here not to entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh-one.
It's been moved by Councilmember Michael. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Here not at call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The last item is we have, uh, council minutes from November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. We entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. Does anyone want to be brave?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Councilmember Michael. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Let's move adjourned. Do we have a second?
Second.
Move second, all in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.